After I got done reading them all, then I felt the reality of what you said. And I was like, this really, really bothers me.
Good evening. I would like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the, um, wait a sec. I'm sorry? I missed the wrong thing. Yeah, let's rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we now raise our minds and hearts to you. We ask for your help and guidance in what we are about to do. Please bring your judgment to our minds so that our progress will be an inspiration to others. With your help, we will achieve success. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Member Olson?
Here. Welcome, everybody.
Member Berantyne?
Present.
Member Cuesta? Member Martinez?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Protem Russell?
Present.
Five present, one absent, the one absent being Councilmember Cuesta.
Um, I would entertain a motion, actually, uh, we're moving on to Agenda Item 5, consideration of minutes of the previous session. I would entertain a motion, um, to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting from April 2nd.
I move to approve the minutes for April 2nd, 2018.
Second?
Is there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Um, I actually would like to, I have a question on page three under Consent Agenda Items. It says, "Every small municipal and county government enterprise agreement," I don't...
Is on tonight's agenda, so I have a feeling that's one of those ones that may have accidentally exported to when we went to print. So I will double-check that. Thank you for catching that.
Okay. Great. Thank you. That's the only thing I have. Um, with that correction, um, please vote. Well, as amended, or it may not be the one.
As amended, yep.
Okay, as amended.
As corrected.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. Bye-bye.
Moving on to Agenda Item 6, Recognition of Scheduled Public Comment. Our first speaker this evening is Kathy Schmidt, and she will address council regarding Giving Heart. Good evening, Ms. Schmidt.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Uh, would you please give your name and address before you start?
Um, my name is Kathy Schmidt, and I live Six Canyon Cedar in Littleton. I've been a volunteer at Giving Heart for two years. During that time, I've cooked, served lunches, helped guests in the clothing room, arranged mailing addresses, and have been a research navigator. Giving Heart exists to see the community of those experiencing homelessness transformed in the name of Jesus Christ by igniting hope, investing spiritually, physically, emotionally, and intellectually in lives, and to impact the community. I'm here tonight because I want to share with you what we experience every day that we are open. For example, last November, a young man, 26, experiencing homelessness, came through our door. He was born in Nevada and had grown up in Texas. He could not prove who he was. He didn't have one slip of paper, anywhere to receive mail. Uh, his goal was to have custody of his daughter. You can only imagine his hopelessness. We had just finished some research on how you could help a person who had absolutely nothing. But first, he was thirsty, hungry, and cold. With a hot cup of coffee, a nutritious lunch, and some clean clothes, the conversation started. He was hopeful. At Giving Heart, that cup of coffee is the start of a relationship. It's a way to invest in our guests' lives. Those clothes are a step towards dignity. And so his journey began. In order to receive his ID, social security guard, um, birth certificate, he had to have an address. So the first thing we did is let him use Giving Heart as his mailing address. With a RTD trip planner and a daunting list of steps, he navigated the city, a city he wasn't familiar with. Each Tuesday at Giving Heart, he would check his mail. We encouraged him as the process dragged on. We invested a great deal of time and energy in his life, and he felt it. He didn't give up. We shared coffee, lunch, tears, laughs. By February, and that's four months, it's a long time to hang in there, by February, he had his Colorado ID, his social security card, his medical card, and a Nevada birth certificate. He could prove who he was. He then started helping other guests and became kind of a volunteer on Tuesdays. The next week, he came and told us he had a job at Subway, and he has a goal of becoming a welder. That is what we call transformation. And what I like partly about this story is along the way, as I talked to him, I said, "Well, how did you know? You're new in the city. How did you ever find Giving Heart?" And he said he went up to a Inglewood police officer and said, "I need help." And the police officer said, "Go to Giving Heart." Our work at Giving Heart is all about relationship and transformation. To be transformed, people have to have basic physical and psychological needs met. We at Giving Heart invest in that transportation, not transportation, transformation. We greet people by name and smile with a hug. We hold some while they cry, and hold some when they are shedding tears of joy. We remember their stories so that we can honestly ask how their week went, and they remember us and ask us the same. We're excited about those size 13 to 15 size shoes that are donated because we remember who needs them, and we remember who needs them for a specific job. We cross our fingers that certain sizes of jeans are donated. We put aside certain types of shampoo because we know which guest is allergic to zinc and just can't use any old shampoo. We cook two different pots of chili because some people can't eat pork, and we always have a cheese sandwich ready for our vegetarian. Many times when I help people in our resource room get clothes, lifesaving coats, blankets, not all the sizes are there, and many times, they turn to me so apologetic, keep saying, "I'm so sorry, this is keep taking so much time, I'm so sorry," they get nervous. And I just say, "You know, that's why I got up this morning. I got up, I'm here from 9:00 to 3:00, and the only reason I did that was to help you find the clothes you need, have some lunch, have a cup of coffee, and help you on your journey." And you should just see their faces. They go from the nervous, "I'm bothering you," to, "Huh, okay, I'll look for the right size shirt." There are so many ways Giving Heart volunteers ignite hope and invest in lives. I really, really offer you an invitation. Please come. Please come any Tuesday. And tomorrow, I cooked lunch, so please come and have lunch with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Let me see if there's any questions from City Council. Seeing none, thank you very much. Um, our next speaker this evening is Owen Beaver. He is an Inglewood resident that will address council about the late-night speeding of cars. Good evening, Mr. Beaver.
Good evening. 3148 South York Street, across the street from the lovely home of Linda Olson. And no more fire trucks. Remember, it scared me, and I thought for sure your house was going to burn up.
You handled it very well.
I grew up in Park Hill, and I was, in my college years, I had a friend who had a brother who was just getting into nitro racing, and he too wanted to get into nitro racing, except at the dumb age of 20, we thought we could go down Park Hill at 26th Avenue, and we could beat everybody who was out there. And we did for about 200 yards, and then the engine blew up, and the piston was laying on the side, and I said, "I think you put too much nitro in the gas." So at the age of 70, I'm listening to cars on a Sunday night, Saturday night, January, February, March, I could not believe, from down University to Hampton, and Hampton on down to Clarkson, down to Downing, on down to Broadway. Uh, and they're expensive cars. They're not just junk cars, they're not kids. Well, they're, at the age of 70, they're kids to me. But last Tuesday night, my neighbor and I, Leonard, who's across the street from Linda, um, we both heard the same guy at Yale and University, and that light turned green, and he gave it everything that car had. And by the time he got down to Hampton, he had got through his fourth gear, just like at Vandermeers. And then he went around that corner, and he was gone. And I've been up there, I've been trying to get licensed, I've just been looking, watching, and these cars are expensive. They're BMWs, they're, uh, um, uh, Mercedes AMG models. These are 60, 70, $80,000 cars, and they're driving very fast. And I came down off of, um, Univer, uh, down, Colorado Boulevard down Hampton by Wilshire Golf Course the other night, and there was two of them that left the light there. And I got up to 70 miles an hour, and I could not stay up with them going down that hill. And I thought, "No wonder we have so many accidents at Hampton and University," because I listen to the fire trucks, and I thank Denver every time they go by, because I know this, it's, "Thank God they're there." But I said, "I don't hear any sirens." The police say, "Well, we can't chase after them," and I understand the safety point, but just irritate them would be fine with me. You know, it's the old little tickle goes a long ways. And a friend of mine had the same problem in his hometown, and they finally just put two and three cops up on a Sunday night, and eventually caught a couple of people. And by God, they had warrants out for their arrest, and they kind of disappeared into the system for a couple of months, and so something good came of it. So my three minutes are up. If you have any questions?
You actually have five, so if you want to continue speaking some more.
Well, it's just that I was at, uh, I shop at the Freshmark King Supers, and I came out a couple of nights ago, and I watched again one of those cars come up to that right-hand turn. If you hit the light just right, you know, they can go around that corner and jam that throttle, and they're gone. And I've, and I've listened to a couple of cars a month ago, and I knew that they were getting off on Clarkson and going down Clarkson. One of them was going down Downing and turning onto Dartmouth and making that circle again. The next morning, I got out there, and I noticed that there was tire marks at the Downing and Dartmouth area. So I think, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those things that I've been watching and listening, and I would just wish that somehow the police department could get somebody out there just every now and then, because it's, it gets worse, and I don't want it to get worse. I thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, yes. Are there any questions? I do have one question. About what time on Saturday and Sunday evening is this happening?
It's late, you know? It, it starts, but the warmer temperatures, they start coming out earlier. But, um, uh, one of our warm nights, we had the door open, and my wife had been asleep, and she came out, and she said, "What is all this racket?" And I said, "And that's when they had five and six and seven cars going down University." And just, and I said, "That's what they're doing, and there's no, there's no impediment." And, and I know it's tough to do that, but I think we have to try to do something, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Jerry Walker, an Inglewood resident, and he is here to address council. Good evening, Mr. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council, fellow citizens out there. My name is Jerry Walker. I live at 4180 South Pearl Street, citizen of Inglewood, Colorado. And, uh, thought I'd bring you a movie tonight. Yes, the good news is you won't have to listen to me talk tonight. There's been some talk about our solar panels up on the roof, and the roof that we have, and, uh, I wanted to just go back and refresh everybody's memory on how we got here, how we got the solar panels, and, uh, and how that whole contract came about, okay? And since we have a movie tonight, I brought you guys some popcorn, okay? That should be in front of you right now.
Thank you.
Oh, that's what's...
Inglewood is a first-tier suburb across the street from Denver, approximately 32,000. City Council instructed our staff to look at opportunities for Christian patients to discover the payback on the social security policy for getting a full city income.
Is that where your team, uh, we started to present, and then we got opportunities to apply?
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Do you have, um, more?
No, actually, just remember, there were, someone in there, I believe, said Ameresco still owned the equipment and took all the responsibility for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I do have one question. When was that video made? Do you know?
2011.
2011.
And if everyone in City Council, or if anyone on City Council would like me to email you a copy of that, show of hands, and I will.
I think that would be a great idea.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Walker?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Ms. Coween Dickerson. She will address, um, she's an Inglewood resident that will address City Council. Good evening, Ms. Dickerson.
Do you want me to state my name and address?
Yes, please.
Coween Dickerson, 2835 South Pennsylvania Street, here in Inglewood, for the last 20 years. Uh, well, you've seen the promo and the hype, and unfortunately, this isn't going to be quite as much fun, because I'm going to tell you the reality. At the March 5th study session, City Manager Kek talked about the roof damage and cost on the Civic Center, and Member Martinez commented about outdated equipment. I started researching and then had to do a CORO request to try to determine if we actually saved $130,000 per year, and what the agreement actually says, and who is responsible for what. Briefly, the city has a 20-year agreement with Ameresco, which was effective June 21st, 2010. The city agreed to purchase all of the energy output defined in Exhibits, and Ameresco is obligated to ensure each system is delivering the output as set forth in Exhibit B. The city warrants the rooftops for quiet enjoyment by Ameresco. All benefits, tax credits, go to Ameresco. All cost of panels, operation, maintenance, and repairs are borne by Ameresco. If a premise becomes unusable for solar or is planned to be demolished, the city must notify Ameresco 180 days prior and provide another site that is equivalent, and pay all relocation expenses, or the fair market value, or the termination fee applicable on the tables attached, if Ameresco declines the site proposed. Ameresco is responsible for any damages to city property caused by them or toxic materials due to their activities in repair, in repairing, maintaining, and operating their equipment on the roof sites. Per agreement, Ameresco is required to hold a $2 million policy per incident. I cannot find in the agreement any savings to the city, nor have any of my requests for such info been answered. Where is the $1,400,000 that we saved over the eight-year period this, uh, this agreement's been in effect? We paid minimal for solar to Ameresco. Per the agreement, the city is locked into purchasing all the input from Ameresco solar panels for the next 12 years. Currently, we are paying a little over 10 cents per kilowatt to Ameresco, so any savings must come from other sources than the cost of energy. If we pay to Ameresco, if we pay 10 cents to Ameresco and only five to Excel for conventional energy, we are losing money, not saving. If we are paying 10 cents to Excel, we are barely breaking even. Ameresco is obligated to provide energy as specified in the Exhibits and maintain the equipment to provide the agreed energy output. If, as others have said, that the solar has never worked correctly and the equipment is outdated, why has no one addressed this with Ameresco and/or terminated this agreement? If Ameresco is supplying the agreed-upon energy, any question about dated or not working equipment is irrelevant. Then there is the Safety Services Building installation. We are obligated to either offer another roof with the same access to solar and pay the cost of relocation, or pay, uh, the fair market value, or $46,141, whichever is greater. Has anyone even considered this, or notified Ameresco, or budgeted this, because that building is scheduled to be demolished when the new building is built? Another complication in the separate license agreement attached, there is a note, presumably from our city attorney, uh, as of 2010, that the Civic Center will have to be licensed by EEF, though no such license is attached. Where is that license? Should a claim about the damage to the roof have come from EEF? Seems a forensic audit of EEF is ever more needed. The most critical and disturbing and costly point is the roof will cost as 1.1 million, or is that 1.6 million? If the damage was caused by the solar panels leaking glycol, why have we not made it, made a claim to Ameresco for that? We are in the hole just on this item. I repeat, we are risking at least $46,000 on the Safety Services Building alone, and 1.1 or 1.6 million for the roof damage. The city apparently cannot manage an agreement purporting to save us money and cut our carbon footprint without risking major breaches on our part that will nullify any purported benefits. Is solar what it was cracked up to be? It does not seem to have been a benefit to the city, and may be far, far more costly than having done nothing.
Thank you very much. Questions? Councilmember Berantyne?
Do you, that was a lot of information, and I appreciate you bringing that forward, but do you have that available?
I can send you the, uh, the copies of all the agreements and resolutions that I received via CORO request.
And your presentation?
Uh, yes, I can give you that, and I do have some paperwork here, an exhibit and the note. It was typed in on the license agreement, and it says, "I think we need a separate license agreement just for the Civic Center executed by EEF." Exhibit A...
In all fairness, that, I mean, if you'd like to include that as part of the request, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Dickerson.
Do you want me to have these copies?
That would be great. Thank you. Our next speaker is Elaine Holt. She is not here this evening. She will be in the hospital for a couple of days, so if you would just keep her in your prayers. Our next speaker is LeAnn Hyzing. She will address council regarding homelessness. Good evening, Ms. Hyzing.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Ann Hyzing. My address is 9884 Fairwood Street in Littleton. Mayor Protem Russell and distinguished members of Inglewood City Council, I am the Executive Director for Severe Weather Shelter Network, providing emergency shelter for your homeless constituents in Inglewood. I wanted to extend this evening my personal gratitude and thanks for your participation and attendance at the recent community forum. Every member of a community needs to be valued and supported for a healthy community. Each of you have been elected to your position by the constituents in your district, business owners, residents living in homes and high occupancy buildings. As I listen to the video recordings of these meetings, or I'm here in person, it is with regular frequency that I hear about the importance of supporting and hearing your constituents. I understand healthy businesses are a primary revenue source in a community. Residents living in homes are also critical to the health of the city as they pay taxes for services and products. And these, if these revenue sources fail, the city fails. I believe there is another way a city can fail. Cities that marginalize or fail to recognize any part of their community are doomed to fail in the long run. People living in Inglewood who are currently experiencing homelessness are often criminalized, ticketed, and told to move on for loitering, public urination, camping, and being a nuisance. And while Cafe 180 and Giving Heart and The Well provide times and places for rest, there really is no place for these citizens of Inglewood to rest or engage in healthy ways during the day. There is no shelter in Inglewood where they can get off the streets at night, leading to more ticketing and move-on statements from the local police. Severe Weather Shelter Network by nature is a collaborative organization. Many different organizations work together to provide emergency shelter for individuals living on the streets in Inglewood. Yet what we can provide is not enough. What if all facets of the community work together to create a pathway out of homelessness? Not by handouts, but by giving a hand up. We have learned the value of requiring our guests to participate in chores each morning. Even more importantly, we have taken the time to learn names and stories. We have worked hard to provide an avenue in which our guests can begin to feel heard, understood, and understand their value as an individual and their value as a member of a safe community. Even that is not enough. I believe each of you, as elected officials, have the opportunity to set the bar for how the rest of the Inglewood residents engage with our homeless neighbors. All of you have people living in your districts that are currently experiencing homelessness. What would it look like if every facet of the community provided representatives to bring, to bring actual solutions to this very challenging reality? Change the trend is setting the standard for this type of a model in Inglewood. What would it take? It would take each of us counting the cost of allowing homelessness in Inglewood to continue. It would take an open mind and heart, a willingness to change... It would take an open mind and heart, a willingness to change, or perhaps modify some priorities. I believe that each of you pursued the opportunity to serve on City Council in order to make a difference. I believe that you wanted to make Inglewood a good and healthy community where businesses flourish, families want to raise their children, and our respected elders would like to retire. I believe that you ran for office thinking that you had all of your constituents in mind. I believe it is in the best interests of Inglewood that each of you do what you can to support organizations and collaborative efforts that are truly seeking to create that pathway out of homelessness. Collaborations like Change the Trend are truly seeking to make Inglewood a place where everyone has a chance to succeed. So please know that I hold each of you in my personal prayers as you serve, and I thank you for the opportunity to share this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Heising. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming. Our next speaker this evening is Doug Cohn, an Inglewood resident, will address counsel regarding historic preservation. Good evening, Mr. Cohn.
Good evening. Have three things just real quick tonight. The first is, I want to say thank you to Martin and Dan, two of the city building maintenance guys who fixed up a spot downstairs or a whole set of artifacts from the General Ironworks. We have one small truck full, and we have the patent books, we have the pictures, we have blueprints. The engineer who gave them to us, we're going to get together with him regularly, and he's going to explain to us all this stuff is, because I don't have any idea. I lasted one year in engineering school in college, and they offered if I transferred out of engineering, they wouldn't flunk me out of college. The other thing I wanted to talk about, the second thing, two weeks from tonight, on April 30th, we're going to have a very interesting history talk. I have some flyers outside the door. Where the King Superstore is on Broadway, we had the Alexander Film and Airplane Company. They made really, one of the best companies making the short movies, and had a really good reputation, and they started building airplanes right there on Broadway in 1924. The main engineer was a fellow named Alfred Mooney, who later went to work and became the engineer for Cessna and then had his own airplane company in the 40s. What David Gilbert is going to talk about, in 1928, a terrible fire happened at the factory here, the deadliest fire in Inglewood's history. And David's going to go through what happened, how that happened, and then that event changed a number of fire code laws for factories all around Colorado. Even eight people died and a whole bunch more were injured, but the result was it changed lots of laws. The other event, Memorial Day Sunday, over at the high school, I'd like to invite you all to come join us at 2:00 in the afternoon to say thank you. Thank you to family members who have served in the military, to relatives, to people that you've known from school, and it's going to be a really good celebration. And y'all up in the front here and y'all in the back are welcome to join us on Memorial Day Sunday. There's some flyers outside the back on the table. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the invitation. Are there any questions for Mr. Cohn? Seeing none, thank you very much. Our next speaker this evening is Joe Anderson, an Inglewood resident, will address counsel. Good evening, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, counsel. Thank you for your time. All I have tonight is a quick update. At the last council meeting, I made an appeal for the businesses on the 4300 block and Giving Heart to all get together and sit down at the same table and make an effort to resolve their differences. I noted that council members Martinez and Wink were willing to play the role of facilitators in that conversation. The meeting with all the parties is still in the works, but I do want to report some progress. Last Tuesday, I volunteered at Giving Heart for the first time, and while I was there, J.J. Margota and, who's a neighbor down the block, he's here, I saw him, as well as Scott, who's there as well, and of course, you know Jerry Walker, they all came down just to stop in and visit Giving Heart for lunch. I believe some of the Giving Heart folks invited them down. And I was able to spend about an hour, maybe an hour, maybe 45 minutes with them over lunch and had a very good discussion. I want to commend them for coming down to Giving Heart and being willing to have a civil discussion. My takeaway was that both sides of the dispute really do have a lot of common ground. I want to especially thank J.J. for providing many good suggestions, both in regard to how Giving Heart can be a better neighbor to the businesses and more generally for addressing homelessness in Inglewood. I have already passed these suggestions on to the leadership of Giving Heart and Change the Trend and hope that some of them can be implemented in some fashion. I especially like his suggestion that Giving Heart or Change the Trend could put together some sort of official work program like Clean Slate in Dallas. The beginnings of something like that is already in the works, and I look forward to seeing how that develops. I know it takes time to put together the kind of meeting we need for reconciliation there on the 4300 block, but I believe this conversation that I had with them bodes well for the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson? Seeing none, thank you for the good report. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, recognition of unscheduled public comment, our first speaker this evening is Mike Jones. He is here to address counsel regarding homelessness. Good evening, Mr. Jones. Could you give us your name and address?
My name is Mike Jones. I live at 4851 South Pennsylvania Street. I'm a resident in Inglewood. And Doug, I appreciate your little bit on the history. I'm a pilot and never knew that about Mooney, and I have flown his airplanes. That's an interesting little tidbit. Thank you for allowing me to address counsel with some thoughts and observations that I've made over the past couple of months regarding the homeless issue in our city. I believe that there is no dispute amongst our citizens, that those who deal with the homeless, that there is a problem, and I want to focus on the word "problem." It's an issue that we must address, and it's a problem within our society as a whole. But since we are in the city of Inglewood and we're made up of its citizens, its businesses, the churches, and the government, I believe that we can only enact strategies that will help to solve some of the homeless issues and stabilize the rest of what is part of that homeless issue. There is a gap today in how we're approaching that. What I have witnessed over the past couple of months are individuals and groups that are very passionate about this issue and are taking actions and have plans. Passion is great in accomplishing important efforts, but passion needs to be kept in check to a plan or a goal. Unfortunately, this issue has polarized in the community, and as a small community wedged between several larger cities, we bear the brunt of what happens around us. We cannot allow the tides of decisions made by these cities that we cannot control to have a negative impact on the lifestyle of the citizens of our city. To continue down a path that increases the polarization would eventually lead to counterproductive efforts and frustration by everyone involved. We continue to have problems in the South Broadway area that we've discussed for numerous councils now. But in speaking to citizens throughout Inglewood, it's apparent that the problem is growing. The impact that not effectively addressing the homeless issue is seen in businesses that are leaving, people that are talking about selling their homes and leaving, and general discontent that must be resolved. The fact is that time moves on and no specific plan is being created to address the issue. Again, make no mistake, this is a problem. A common statement that gets thrown around is that criminalizing homelessness is not effective and does not work. On face value, I agree with that statement. However, let us not confuse this by using it as an excuse not to uphold the laws in which we live and that create the foundation and stability for our city. It's the bedrock for the reason that we have moved to and we continue to live in this city. It is what needs to be instilled in every individual, whether homeless or not, in order to maintain the lifestyle that Inglewood provides us.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Jones? Seeing none, thank you for coming. Our next speaker this evening is J.J. Margota. He will address city council on the subject of homeless.
Good evening, council members. And everybody from Inglewood, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. We did get a chance to spend some time on Tuesday trying to address some of the issues with Giving Heart. I think we've made some headway, and I think we're seeing some good strides from both parties. The 4300 block and, just like Mr. Jones said, we're trying to work together to come to bridge the gap as best we can. But let me say this, as myself, trying to bridge that gap, when you stick your head up around the city of Inglewood, you could get it shot off. That's what I'm finding out. The city of Inglewood is trying to use intimidation tactics and different standpoints with my company specifically since we've moved in and spoke at the Change the Trend meeting. I've now been threatened, I've now been being intimidated, my business now, to have my sales license for products being sold at our location. I'm asking the council members to look into this and take some serious requests into what we're looking at. I've got a packet that I've sent up for each one of you, so my question is, what happens when you speak up in the city of Inglewood in Colorado? I'm not just the only one that's hearing this from, but there is other businesses on my block that refuse to call police because they're afraid of getting black marks on their record. This is an issue. On March 22nd, I spoke at the Change the Trend homeless meeting condemning the fact that they are not looking out for the neighborhood's best interest. I feel that the conversations that went on there were not specifically about the neighborhoods but only about the homeless. They needed to have more breadth, and I think that's what Mr. Jones is talking about. You'll also see on Exhibit A, on March 23rd, exactly the next day, I received a letter from the city of Inglewood that was created and sent to us threatening us because of motorcycle sales. Exhibit B, I sent an email to Jennifer Nolan at the city of Inglewood answering their emails and asking three very specific questions. Are we going to be targeted for standing up for the small business community of Inglewood? How do we get the bill in the mail for personal property taxes even before one piece of equipment is moved into our location? And why is it okay for other car dealers in the area after us to move in that has the same footprint that we do, but they're allowed to have a car dealer's license? I've received Exhibit C, email threatening us on two separate places in the email for selling motorcycles and expressly taking legal action. I've also attributed Exhibit D, which is a Colorado Open Records request, to the city clerk here, and you'll also see in Exhibit E, documentation of me trying to work with the city of Inglewood on 4398 South Broadway. I'm sorry I'm running over for a few minutes, but I'm very passionate about this, and I thank you for giving me some extra time. I would love to talk to the five of you. If you'd like to come down to my facility, you could see what's going on. And I say this, the people in the city of Inglewood that work in the zoning office need to get off their ass and find out what's going on.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Margota? Councilmember Berentine?
Just clarification, you had the three minutes, so you were right on time. I'll give you extra.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker this evening is Mike Lindgren. He will address counsel regarding the homeless. Good evening, Mr. Lindgren.
Good evening. The address, 4346 South Broadway, Gecko Vapes. Again, right next door to Giving Heart. For the last two months, I've been attending every single meeting here, and a bunch of businesses have been complaining that there are some issues with the way that the homeless have been going on. And we sit down and hear speaker after speaker lecture us about how the homeless is a problem, which we agree with. We hear how they're good people, which we agree with. My problem is, it's how it's being handled that we have an issue with. Sidewalks being blocked off, my traffic being cut off. I finally got to see a report from the Impact Team, and people are assuming I'm exaggerating when I say I called 100 times. I was lowballing. I was at 79 by the end of last year, and by the time they came this year, I was well over 21 calls. And those are just the ones where I didn't find the owner and ask him to move. That was actually responses, the other ones, I called back and asked him not to dispatch a cop. So we have that issue, then I get lectured about how we hate the homeless. There is not one business that I know of on the block that hates homeless. I would love if things were a little different. I also read a report where I actually agree with, I believe it was either to Sergeant McGruff or from Sergeant McGruff, saying that building is not adequate. So either they're unable to or unwilling to do what they do without impacting the rest of the neighborhood. Just as a indication, there's already been four businesses, five at the U Center that's actually, or was in Giving Heart, three more are planning to leave in the next few months. There's not that many businesses on that block. I would like to leave, but honestly, with all of my calls to the police going missing, it's kind of hard to pack and leave, but I guarantee next April, when my lease is up, I won't be there come March, oh, I'm sorry, May. And before I use up more time, it'll be good enough.
Are there any questions for Mr. Lindgren? Councilmember Berentine?
Did you say that you did get a report from the Impact Team or you just got a visit from them?
I got a visit from them and asked for a copy, and they did email that to me.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Lindgren. And our final speaker this evening is Mr. Jim Woodward. And he has come to address us regarding counsel, I believe. Good evening, Mr. Woodward.
Good evening, city council. Over the past two years, past plus-two years, it has been the observations of citizens and others of the dysfunction and division of the Inglewood City Council. We have watched, in person and through the internet streaming, city council meetings being hijacked by one individual council member, intentionally circumventing council guidelines and rules of order, bullying, a non-compromising attitude, grandstanding, and tirades intended to delay the business of council, and unwarranted threats to city staff. Additionally, we have witnessed what we believe to be deception, misinformation, and lies of omission or by omission. In my opinion, and that of other District III citizens, these harmful and unjustified acts by Councilmember Berentine are malfeasance, in violation of the public trust and lack the qualities of effective leadership that should be required by an elected official representing District III in our city. Councilmember Berentine's presence on the city council increases governmental dysfunction and division at a time when Inglewood needs to address its challenges and opportunities in good faith to move our city forward. Due to Member Berentine's failure to represent the best interests of the hard-working taxpayers of District III, citizens of District III aim to recall Councilmember Berentine in accordance with the city charter and replace her with a newly-elected council member to adequately and professionally represent us in moving Inglewood forward. The affidavit will be filed with the city clerk tomorrow. To see a copy of the language and reasons stated in the affidavit, and for additional information, please go to www.inglewoodrecall.com on or after Thursday, April 19th. Thank you. I think any questions you may have will be answered. Thank you. I think any questions you may have will be answered on that website. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Woodward. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, oh wait, response to public comment, council response to public comment. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Berentine?
I greatly appreciate the, the presentation on Amaraasco. Think that a very complicated issue that's gone over for several years. And hopefully, we can get some information on whether that has caused any damage to the roof since that is million-one or million-six, depending on what's going on. And what we're going to do with the service center, because I do believe that she is correct, she did a beautiful job on that presentation, a lot of information. So I'm grateful that she's willing to go ahead and present that to us so that we all have an opportunity to look that over a little bit more. The racing, I think, is not just, I appreciate Owen Beaver bringing that up because I do not think that the racing is just an issue on university, although I imagine it's a little more open. I think Mr. Walker has come about Broadway as well, so hopefully, we can look into that. What's, what's going on with that? I do appreciate the community swell of interest in this homeless issue. And some grassroots organizations have come forward to try to bring a little bit more what people perceive as some balance to this issue. I know that that was the first meeting for Change the Trend, but it did look a little kind of one-sided on there. And I, I feel honored to have finally arrived. And my, one of my favorite quotes is, "If you really stand for something, you will make enemies." And I understand that some people have bemoaned the fact that council has gotten more civil since a couple of people have left and were working together, and you miss the show. But I appreciate the fact that I stand for something well enough to qualify for anybody's time to come up and bring the issue forward. And I appreciate that eventually, I guess I'll find out what the details are instead of the vague accusations. Thank you very much for all coming.
Thank you. Are there any more responses? Councilmember Olson?
I wanted to address just a little bit further the question of the speeding. And I mentioned to Manager Kek tonight before we started that I have sent an email to the counterpart of Denver for city council there to see if there's some sort of coordinated effort we could give to that. But I'm not sure if Manager Kek has anything else recently that might be added to that, but definitely on the, on the radar, yeah. And as the warm weather comes, probably more motorcycles come out as well, which are also very noisy and, and create all kinds of corridor issues for us. So maybe a coordinated effort. The last thing I wanted to say was that along with the people who are finding themselves in homelessness, there are a number of initiatives going on. I'm very thankful for our two councilmembers who I think have come up with some kind of plan that hopefully, it'll be very soon that we hear about the meeting together. But we have put it, so the citizens know, we have put it on the study session. So we have never really actually had a full study session to think about how we, as a council, will take this up. It's the first time we've really done that. And I thank those of you on all sides and ways of thinking to push us to do that because it's time for us to think about that in more serious ways, especially as we go into the budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to thank all of you who spoke this evening in the scheduled and unscheduled comment periods. I want to speak directly to Mr. Joe Anderson and thank him, thank you, for your continued dedication, community investment. You constantly strive to improve our community, and it is well-recognized across Inglewood. As Mr. Anderson mentioned, and now Member Olson, yes, Member Martinez and I will be meeting with business owners neighboring Giving Heart and including Giving Heart throughout the next few weeks. And we'll be providing updates on, with council, with all of you as we have them during our, our public meetings. I want to say additionally that I've taken it upon myself to draft just the beginning of, of a document that council can consider in terms of homelessness. It's something, of course, that won't go forward, go anywhere by itself. But as part of what Member Martinez and I are looking at, it's an attempt to look at the near term, the short term, and the longer term in terms of how Inglewood can approach the broader issue. So I think in the future, hopefully, we can have, I'll have progress enough on this and collaboration with council enough on this such that we can discuss it a bit during our strategic operating planning meeting even, since it's a time for us to look overall at our strategy for the city and since many of the ramifications of such a plan intersect with an overall strategic plan. So I just wanted to make mention of that since many of you who spoke tonight talked about us actually having a plan in place and not just spot-checking the, the current problems we have. So that's all I had to share tonight.
Thank you. And I would like to thank each and every one of you for coming this evening to share with council. And I know that the situation with homelessness does have to be addressed on both sides. And, and I am very hopeful that there is movement in that direction. But I will say this, it has to be all-inclusive of everyone, not only Giving Hearts, not only the businesses, but also the citizens. And so I'm thankful that we are going to bring this forward also and look at it as council. But I want to thank every one of you that has worked so hard to bring unity in this. And, and I am, I do think there are some things that we need to look at. And I will be asking for some council requests regarding some things that have been shared this evening. Doug, thank you for the invitation to those two events that are taking place and for the other information, as always. And Coe, and I do greatly appreciate the information that you have given us. So thank you so much for taking time to bring these situations to city council. With that, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8, Communications, Proclamations, and Appointments. We have a proclamation declaring April 22nd, 2018 as Arbor Day within the city of Inglewood and encouraging all residents to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the United States and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heat, heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in the city of Inglewood increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city of Inglewood, Colorado, has been recognized for 32 consecutive years as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. And whereas the state of Colorado will celebrate Arbor Day on April 22nd, 2018, now therefore, I Rita Russell, Mayor Protem of the city of Inglewood, Colorado, hereby proclaim Arbor Day in the city of Inglewood, Colorado. And I urge all Inglewood citizens to support our city's efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all Inglewood citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Given under my hand and seal, the 16th day of April, 2018. Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Yes, I do have a few comments. We have two Arbor Day events upcoming. The first is on Friday, April 20th. Park staff will be at Bishop Elementary School. And there, we're going, going to be talking to 63 third and fourth graders about tree biology and the history of Arbor Day. Once that educational session is over, staff's going to assist the students with assembling three pre-made benches for their gardens out there. And then on Saturday, April 21st, we have our annual tree sale, which is open to all Inglewood residents. We have 85 trees for sale at $35. And the event starts at 8:00 a.m. in the parking lot at Cushing Park.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Olson?
I have one question about how fast the trees went last year. So how quickly do citizens, like within a half hour?
No, they lasted a little bit longer than that. There were a few left over at the end that weren't chosen, but most of them go very quickly in the first hour.
So be on time if you really want a tree is a good advice. Thank you. Thanks for doing this again this year.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I would entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move to approve 8A, Arbor Day, 2018.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, five eyes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 9, Consent Agenda Items. 9A1 through 9C2, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 9A1, B1, B2, 9C1, 9C2.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I actually would like to pull 9A1, the retail liquor tasting permit, and discuss it separately.
Point of information?
Okay.
Should not have pulled it previously. Can, can we understand a little bit more about why?
Why I, why I'm pulling it? Is that a, first, I, I'm assuming that is an okay question. I, I have some concerns when I read this that perhaps would tie into some of the homeless problem in the city because of some things that I have heard about selling individual bottles of liquor to the homeless. And, and so I do have some concerns about that, and that's why I would like to pull it. Are there?
Point of information, when you pull something, don't you just do that with the clerk? I think you just pull it with the clerk.
I, I think that I can just pull it with.
Usually, we ask the mayor if we can pull it, but I guess you have to ask the clerk.
Well, and I'm okay with asking council. But I would like to pull that and discuss it separately. Any other discussion on that? Okay, so let's move forward with the, let's vote on 9B1 and 2, and C1 and 2.
All votes being cast. Let the record show, five eyes.
Okay, then do we bring that up next, or?
I have a few questions.
All right, so I would entertain a motion for 9A1.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, do, do we need to go with questions first before we entertain the motion?
You'd handle it just like any other matter. So you can start with asking if there's any questions or discussions or concerns, then call for a question, and then discuss it further. You can call for the question, and then discuss it. So whatever works best is fine.
Okay, I just, I have some questions regarding this. How, how will we enforce this? How will we enforce what, whether the liquor stores are doing it according to?
So the applicant will, they'll file an application, the liquor store, and they will have to show that whoever will be giving out the samples has the tip training and are trained. And that will have, that certification will have to come in with their application. Then they will put their dates there, and then I will send over those dates to the police station so they can be monitoring that. And that's something also the clerk's office will be going in and monitoring.
Okay, actually, I'm going to open it up for some other questions first. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Excuse me, Rita. State also conducts random audits. They come in and check it also because we also will send them the dates they filed. They will be doing the tastings.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I too had a similar question in terms of how, how the personnel at the establishments will regulate states of inebriation. Obviously, they're, they're operating under liquor licenses to begin with and must abide by laws. And I would imagine those laws would apply here as well, for the most part. Is there any documentation or from stores that have done this before that was researched and considered before bringing this to us?
Um, I, well, we did, I did research. There was like eight cities, I think it was towards the back there. And I researched through the clerk's list with fees and just kind of finding out things they'd had issues with. And I think because it's limited to those, it was like four ounces. I mean, it depends what they're getting a tasting of.
Sure.
It's not like they can just go in there and sit for hours at a time just getting a tasting. So I think that, but I have not heard any bad things about it, no.
So the, the matter of, which is a very relevant point, perhaps our homeless or individuals that may have difficulty managing alcohol consumption. Was there anything of note among the documentation with this, these other cities?
There was not.
Okay, thank you.
I just think it's important to point out, too, that any violations would jeopardize the establishment's liquor license. And so that in itself is fairly self-regulating. There's many cities that do the tastings, and it's, it's a way for them to be able to bring more business into them. And so they've been inquiring for quite some time, and we just haven't really had that ability to offer that. So I just think that it's definitely highly regulated, not only by the city, but the state. And then certainly, they're providing the alcohol. So I think that they would regulate how much they're going to give out because it's a sample. They're not going to be, people are not going to be purchasing that. So I think that's important to understand as well.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I do agree that it's highly regulated, but I don't know how well it's enforced. And just by the number of questions that we're having, I have a question of why this even came forward. We didn't discuss this in a study session. We're not having a presentation on this information. And really would like to get a little bit more information and delve into some better discussion on some of the concerns and issues with this, including when the last time we did any kind of sweep or whether the, how well our liquor establishments are in compliance with currently not selling to people who may come in, come in, who are already inebriated, and how we're going to balance that with them serving and what the requirements would be for anybody that would be serving in that establishment is a little different than like a bar or tavern. So I have a few more questions, and I really think this ought to go to a study session. I'm very confused why this got brought forward as some hue and cry from our liquor stores that all of a sudden they want to be giving out samples. It's not that much on what it would generate, so I would like a little bit more information. I would like to table this.
Okay. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. With all due respect, there have been four questions, and we have asked many more than four questions to date on this dais before moving forward with a matter. And so I don't think it's an exorbitant amount of questions. And I feel that with such regulation by the state and the city and the fact that a tasting is limited to four ounces maximum and that the license, the licensure of the establishment is under jeopardy, I mean, there's serious ramifications for violating what they've ascribed to doing. I've received sufficient information to vote on this this evening. Thank you to the clerk and the deputy clerk.
Thank you. I do have some other questions in regard to the homeless issue that we are dealing with right now. This is not just going to happen one day. It can happen up to one-third of the days in the entire year. And how are we, if, how are we going to monitor the homeless? I mean, are we going to allow the liquor stores to discriminate against the homeless? I just think this is a bigger issue than we can even imagine. If we want to move forward with this tonight, I cannot support it. I will be voting no because, and I think the homeless issue has become a much bigger issue, perhaps, when, I forget, on, did you list on here when these other cities approved it and what years they approved it?
Did not.
I think that would be a good thing to find out and where they're located, even along the Light Rail corridor. I just, I think it's going to be a bigger problem than we can imagine. Councilmember Olson?
On principle, I would prefer to have these kinds of changes that are going to be a bit more contentious for some to come before us on a study session. I have to say, though, that I am offended that we think this is about homelessness and that we've stereotyped people who find themselves without homes as being those who will be the least or the most affected by this. These are businesses who want to be selling to people who actually have a roof over their head, too. I mean, I'm fine, the whole stereotype has just gotten me stunned right now, so I'm not really exactly sure how to respond to this, as that being the issue. I guess, I would like to see in the future, I'd like to see these kinds of things go forward. I do not see that as the issue to not vote yes on this tonight. That issue is separate. And people who do not have roofs over their heads, families who have found themselves on the edge, are not the people that this is designated for, and I don't believe this will be, the impact it'll have. So it's just my reaction to this and, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I don't know if there's only been four questions, but I think I made it clear that I have some additional questions. I do appreciate the work that the clerk did on this, but we didn't get a presentation on this so that we could just ask questions. I don't think there's a hue and cry from the liquor stores to go ahead and have tastings that they're losing business without this. So I would like to know why this came forward, where we're going with this, and address some of the issues. I don't believe this is all about homelessness, but it is one aspect of it. If you take, if you, we have an amazing new manager at the King Supers. And one of the things that came to my attention, and if you, you know, get out there and as much as I've been dealing with this homeless issue and trying to wrap my head around it, one of the things that the liquor store that is owned on that property by the King Supers, one of the things that they did is they put a big sign on the door that says they will no longer sell individual cans of beer. They do not sell shooters of particular kind that are of a particular preference to people who have drug and alcohol addiction problems who also happen to be homeless as a result of it. It is a piece of it, and I think it is something that we cannot ignore. And they said that they put the sign up, don't, no longer sell these particular individual shot deals, similar to what this kind of tasting would be, and the individual cans of beer. And they eliminated a lot of their problem of the loitering and harassment of their employees by people who have drug and alcohol addiction problems who also happen to be homeless. We have to take the reality of those situations impacting our communities, and I would like to have some more information on this. I don't think, Councilmember Olson, I think you're correct. It's not just about homelessness, but it is an issue of if somebody walks into a liquor store and they're offering free samples, what situation are we creating if in this where a location can go as much as a third of their time and do this? I think we're setting a culture that our community may not want, and I'd like to have a discussion about it. So if you insist on voting on this tonight, I also will have to vote against it. I may vote for it if we had a little bit more of a presentation, reasons for why this needs to happen and where we're going with this. But at this point, I don't think it's a wise thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you. I had a similar reaction to the homelessness intersection on this topic as Councilmember Olson had. I think the, it could impact a lot of people in our community, but I think the business, the liquor store owners probably want this, and it will help them sell more of what they're trying to sell. And I think just in many businesses, we want them to sell as much as they can and be as successful as they can. I think that's what this retail liquor tasting permit is about. It's not about the homelessness issues. I think when we discuss our homelessness issues in study session, we should talk about maybe the alcohol piece that Councilmember Berentine is referring to. But I'm ready to move forward on this tonight.
And I hear what you're saying. I agree it is not only about the homeless issue, but I think this is one part of it. And I think they're a vulnerable population. I do agree that we want to do what's in the best interest of our businesses. But I also agree that it's part of a bigger problem, and we should be discussing things, as Councilmember Olson said, that are more controversial in a study session. Councilmember Olson, did you have another comment?
Yes, out of respect for individuals who find themselves homeless, I would, I will agree, would take this to a study session. I want to have a further conversation about this. This is about drug abuse and about alcohol addiction. This is not about, this is not about people who are homeless as any more than anybody else. I have lots of addictions in my family, friends, and it's a larger issue, so let's talk about it in a study session. Out of, out of respect for homeless people, people who find themselves homeless, that's what I, I will agree with the three, then there'll be three of us here to take it off.
Okay, we will. Do we have to vote on this whether to take it off?
It's bound to.
All right, so...
I thought I made a motion to go ahead and table it. Can we do that?
Yes, you're going to make a motion to table it until we have a study session. Can you make a motion?
I made a motion, nobody seconded it. Do you want to second it?
Yes.
All right, then.
All in favor of taking this to study session and tabling it? Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, three ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Martinez and Councilmember, sorry, Wink. Yes. Sorry, I couldn't read it.
Moving on to agenda item 10, there are no public hearing items this evening. Under agenda item 11, ordinances, resolutions, and motions. 11C1, the wastewater treatment plant raw sewage pump impellers purchase. The Littleton Inglewood wastewater treatment plant staff recommends council approve by motion a purchase per quote with ABI Inc. for the purchase of four raw sewage pump impellers in the amount of $94,676. Good evening. Remind me of your name?
Good evening. Kirk Carson, deputy director of ONM at the Littleton Inglewood wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and thank you, council members. I am here to present on a purchase request for impellers for raw sewage pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. I have a presentation. The Littleton Inglewood wastewater treatment plant is seeking to purchase new impellers for four of its six raw sewage pumps. The raw sewage pumps are critical infrastructure at the wastewater treatment plant. They are required to maintain permit compliance, and they're also required to have the wastewater flow through our treatment plant. As you can see on the slides, they are located in our Headworks facility indicated where the red arrow is in the upper left, and in the lower right is a picture of the raw sewage pumps. The facility has four raw sewage pumps, or I'm sorry, has six raw sewage pumps, and we are seeking purchase of four impellers for four of those six pumps. We have a computerized maintenance management system that helps us with our predictive and preventative maintenance. And through that system, we have been getting notifications of decreased pump efficiency over the last few months. That has initiated some troubleshooting to try to determine the root cause of that loss of efficiency. And what we determined through a condition assessment is that the impellers for these raw sewage pumps are subjected to excessive mechanical wear. These two photos here are actually the current condition of four of the, are representative of the condition of the impellers on four of the six pumps. This purchase request is only for the impellers. Our in-house maintenance staff will be doing all the work themselves. And to counteract some of that heavy mechanical wear, the impellers we're seeking to purchase will be epoxy coated to give them a little bit more abrasion resistance. Out of the six pumps I mentioned, two have been rebuilt in the last two years. One was rebuilt last year, and another one was rebuilt in 2016. And so these four impellers are to bring the remaining four pumps that haven't been rebuilt recently up to the original equipment manufacturer's specifications. This is a representation of what a new pump impeller looks like. As you can kind of compare and contrast this to the pictures we saw two slides ago, you know, it's a pretty big night and day difference. The staff at the Littleton Inglewood wastewater treatment plant requested quotes. The quotes are summarized on this slide, and the recommendation is to proceed with the lowest quote for $94,676 from ABI Incorporated. And ABI is a well-established vendor of wastewater treatment plant equipment. The budget from this will come out of the 2018 commodities budget, and the costs will be shared equally between the city of Littleton and Inglewood. And so we're seeking approval for $94,676 to make the purchase of these four critical impellers for our raw sewage pumps. If the council has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. Are these centrifugal sewage pump impellers?
They are.
And these pass solid material more efficiently than their cousins, correct?
Yeah, so the location where these are at is after our bar screens, so we've removed all the course debris, but they are located before our grit chamber, so there is some fine debris that can get into them, but they are the correct pump for this type of application.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Carson? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve 11C1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
All votes may cast. Let the record show, five ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item 11C2, Excel Energy Renewable Connect Program. City council shall review the recommendation of the city manager for the approval of an agreement with Excel Energy for the Renewable Connect Program and determine whether or not to support the recommended contract terms. The council will then need to provide the city manager with authorization to subscribe to the program through the Excel Energy online portal, portal for Renewable Connect Program if there is a consensus to approve the city's participation. Good evening, Manager Keck.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, and members of council. This particular request has previously been discussed on a rudimentary basis last November with this group indicating that this program was coming forward. This program emanated from the fact that Excel is investing and/or constructing a 50-megawatt facility near Deer Trail. And with that, Excel has desired to open up this particular program to customers such as ourselves to purchase the ability to have the renewable energy credits generated by the renewable energy of the solar system they're constructing. So tonight's request is a little bit unusual from the standpoint that typically when we bring forward a contract to the council, we're asking for an authorization to have approval of the contract. While there is a contract that was provided to you and has been analyzed by the city attorney's office, this particular program's being done vastly different than perhaps others that we've looked at in the past, mainly from the standpoint that they require customers who wish to participate in the Renewable Connect Program to sign up via their portal. They have been talking for months about the launch of this particular program, and they've held off because they weren't ready yet to launch. And so we thought that this program was going to be actually open up next week, but that's been delayed. And so I did want to make sure that I got in front of this council at this time because there is a voracious appetite, as you might imagine, in the marketplace for renewable energy, such as what's being offered here by Excel through this particular program. So the mechanics of the program are as such. Customers can determine to sign up with their Class C accounts, which we have many Class C accounts. It doesn't matter the definition of that account right now so much. But when this particular window opens, customers have the opportunity to indicate their desire to participate under three contract terms: month-to-month, five-year contract, or a 10-year contract. And so the renewable energy credits, though, are calculated upon the length of term that you, that you are subscribing for. So in other words, the longer the subscription, the longer the opportunity that you have to lock in the energy price at what is essentially 4.1 cents per kilowatt. Currently, we are paying on our commercial service accounts about 4.3 cents kilowatt-hour. Doesn't sound like much of a difference, but if you look within my council communication to you, the number of kilowatt-hours that we utilize is significant in a year's period, roughly about 325,000 kilowatt-hours. That does not include our larger commercial accounts, which are not subject to this particular program, mainly the wastewater treatment plant, our water treatment plant, which have significant demands for electricity that vary upon peak demand periods that they have. So this particular program, again, as we begun as staff to do the analysis of, we determined that if we're going to participate in such a program, it made sense to do so at the longest term possible. You might ask why we would do that. Again, if you see the council communication... Again, if you see the council communication, the Renewable Connect Program is predicated on renewable energy credits. The nice thing about this program, unlike any other solar program that's out there right now, even what was mentioned earlier tonight with Amoresco, Amoresco got to keep the renewable energy credit. That's currency. In this particular instance, we get to keep the renewable energy credit, which will be retired on our behalf, and so what that means is that we will not only be able to say that we have a preponderance of our energy from a renewable energy source such as solar, but also we get to retire that energy credit. And again, as you are aware, you have been approached by a group in this community, the Citizens Alliance for Sustainable Energy, that has asked us to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 30% by 2025. It's going to be very, very difficult to do that without looking at programs such as this. Not only is it the right thing to do from an environmental standpoint, as you can see from the mathematics, it also makes sense from an economic standpoint. In part of my research on this particular issue, I went to the United States Energy Information Administration to look at where energy costs are headed. As councils very probably acutely aware, coal is an industry in which has not been able to continue to have a great market share. What we're now seeing is a significant amount of power coming through natural gas, and specifically in Colorado, we're starting to see significant investments in solar as well as wind energy that Excel has begun to invest upon. What that's done to the coal market or the fossil fuel market is that coal is not a renewable resource. It's dissipating. Much of the coal that is mined here in this particular state as well as Wyoming is actually being shipped out of country. And so what that means is that if Excel were to continue with their dependence upon coal-fired energy plants, the cost of coal is going to increase because it's a commodity that is decreasing in volume. And so looking at the U.S. EIA Energy Administration statistics, again, they predict that fossil fuels are becoming more expensive over time, whereas renewables are decreasing. That bodes well for us if we were to enter into a long-term contract with Excel, specifically the 10-year agreement, as I've recommended, to lock in our costs at 4.1 cents a kilowatt-hour with the rebate or the difference between what fossil fuels are in the marketplace. As you can see from what I've presented to you this evening in the packet, our investment of 4.1 cents a kilowatt-hour, in addition to what normal rates would be, is offset by that renewable energy credit or the cost for fossil fuels, and so it's zero, actually our participation is zero kilowatt, zero cents per kilowatt, which is critical. Now, as I said in my report, this could change. There could be times when fossil fuels are cheaper, but in the long haul, in the long term, we believe very firmly and strongly that a long-term agreement such as this makes sense for the city to participate, to have both the economics of it as well as, and just as important, if not more important, the ability to enunciate that we receive our power through renewable energy sources such as solar. So what does this mean? Again, if you look at what was presented in the memorandum, essentially, the city will be able to, again, claim the renewable energy credits, but also looking at it from a standpoint of reducing 242 metric tons of greenhouse gas or 51.8 passenger vehicles off the road each year. That's significant. In comparison, the city's biogas project at the Littleton-Inglewood wastewater treatment plant, for example, is going to save or cut out roughly 5,500 metric tons, should this council agree to that agreement once it comes forward later this year, or 1,162 cars a year. That's a big project. This is also big. We might even have the opportunity, if the council were to agree to this, at some point in time later on in the year, they're going to open up to corporate customers. That's large, large users, which we would also be able to go back to the table and say, hey, I would like to put a portion of our wastewater treatment plant's energy consumption, water treatment plant's consumption also into renewable energy to further reduce our greenhouse gas emissions as well as lock into that price for energy over the long haul. And again, as we know, energy prices fluctuate, and as you always see, our friends at Excel seem to spend a lot of time at the PUCO, asking them to allow them to increase the cost that we pay for natural gas via thermes or for energy in the kilowatt-hour with electricity. So at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, the complexity of this particular matter is I'm asking permission from council, authorization, that when this program opens, which could be in an email any day now, to say, hey, the portal is open. If you want to participate, please do so. And the reason I'm pushing hard for this is that I've been told, and I didn't attend the webinar, Mr. Wolf attended on my behalf while I was on vacation, but they did stipulate that this energy will sell very quickly. And it is open, by the way, to residents, too. I'm going to tell, I'll let the residents know the day after we register that they can hop on, because we want to make sure that we have the ability to acquire this power through this particular vehicle that's offered by Excel.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilmember Olson?
Thank you, Manager Kek. This is great to see this come forward with all this information. The corporate possible flexibility with the renegotiation, so that our wastewater plant would meet those criteria to be a corporate kind of?
It is considered, that's a corporate account because of the volume. Typically, those accounts are when you're using 20,000 kilowatt-hours or more a year, and that's an account that I don't want to tell you how many kilowatt-hours we use, but we use them.
Yeah, I would imagine that's the lion's share of it. So the contract will allow that flexibility to renegotiate that once that program comes on board, and then we could shift it over and reap even more benefits from it. Okay, thank you.
Potentially, if we're able to get in under the, if there's available kilowatt-hours. We may not be able to move 100% of our demand load down there to that, but if it opens up, we'll be watching very carefully.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Are there other questions? One of the questions that I have is entering into a long-term agreement for five to 10 years, how does that impact Tabor?
Excellent question, and as I mentioned, the city attorney's office has examined this contract. The language that they have written into the contract essentially allows for this annual appropriation. It's not specific Tabor language, but our attorney's office, when they examined the contract, felt that this would be permissible to participate within, with the language that they presented. I'm surprised. I think they've actually written this very favorably for municipalities and governments within the state of Colorado to be able to participate.
Okay, thank you. You said that we talked about this in November?
Yes.
Was it on a study session?
It was a city manager's choice to say, hey, council, here's, I actually sent you a program that looked like this. It's a PowerPoint that says Renewable Connect, and we didn't spend time discussing it because it didn't have the details. It was, hey, we got this new program. Here's what it looks like. It'll be rolled out, and now we're here at this point with the program.
Okay, I have some more questions, but I'll go to Councilmember Martinez first.
Thank you. I am excited we're talking about this. I know it was some time ago that you brought it to our attention. I'm really happy to see it hopefully come forward. If we go forward with this, which I would love to see us go forward, would Excel, I assume Excel would be able to provide us the information on how many of our residents sign up for the program?
Yes, and just to clarify, they're slightly different programs. So the first, this Renewable Connect program, the first kind of application period, the one that we're trying to jump on, is that classification that we would fall under as a city. It does open for residences as well later. They're going to have two different time periods.
Will it be a phased approach to that?
That's right.
At that time, we will be able to get that information?
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
To clarify that, our decision tonight doesn't influence any way whether residents will be able to participate in that once it opens up, right? Okay, just want to make that clear in case people thought there was some staged approach. No, there isn't. They're two separate things. It'll be open to residents, and we'll probably get it in our bill or something, some kind of an announcement unless you get to us first.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I'm a little concerned about the 10-year timeframe. I mean, as we've pointed out, the technology changes quickly, and what Amoresco put on our roof is outdated, and, I mean, we want to, we didn't, the council at that time went ahead and committed us to 20 years, even though that's written into the Tabor stuff, too, but there's problems with getting out of that contract. And then, as what was pointed out tonight, there is also problems with how do we monitor this? We have a lot of these issues, these programs that come forward, and they sound good, and we want them, and we want them to do what they're supposed to do, but the monitoring of them is difficult, and it's very disappointing later to find out that they are not performing as we wanted. A lot can happen in 10 years, and I'm kind of concerned about going that longer term like that. Solar came along, and then something else may come along that's better for us to kind of put our focus on, so why the, I mean, I understand that it's better locking us in, but are we locking ourselves into something that we're not going to end up wanting in 10 years?
No, I think it's a fair question. I think the vast difference here, and this is why this is even more so attractive to me as well as staff, is that we're not having to leverage an asset that we already own, like our roof, from a real estate perspective. We don't have to buy the equipment. We don't have to rely upon some piece of equipment to perform. We are relying on Excel to deliver a product as they said they're going to deliver, and so there are contract languages in there that states what would happen if they failed to provide us with PV or photovoltaic power during this period. So your question's a good one, your concern's a good one as well. I think, again, looking at where energy pricing is going, renewable energy is going to be the future for sure. Wind is not as reliable as photovoltaic power. Wind power is great. We have a lot of wind in the state, but it's just not enough to really get us to a point of where that's going to be the lion's share of power provision, photovoltaic is. So from that standpoint, again, looking at the way they've written the terms, the longer term gives us the opportunity to buy into a program with the least amount of cost, if there's going to be a cost. If we went into a shorter term, if we went with a five-year term or the month-to-month, you can see that we're starting to pay to participate in that program. What I was trying to do was alleviate the city from having to pay to participate, to buy energy, just for the sake of saying, hey, we're spending money so that we can say that we have renewable energy. I think that's important for some folks, as our residents who may have that be their home ethos, to say, you know what, I firmly believe in renewable energy, and I want to pay more for my energy. As a steward of the city's tax dollars, I want to make sure that we're entering into a program where we're not having to pay for that, yet still having the same benefit of saying we're renewable and we're not having to pay any additional for it. But I definitely agree with you. You know, sometimes when we tie the hands of our future political bodies, we need to make sure that we've done our homework. Unlike an Amoresco deal where we're putting something on our roof or relying on that equipment to perform, we have terms in this particular agreement where Excel has to perform, and they have to offer us this price, you know, during the terms of the contract.
That's what Tabor is there for, is to make sure we don't tie the hands of future councils, and who will be, who's responsible then for overseeing these contracts to make sure that they are, I mean, if you put something in a contract that says if you don't perform, that there are some consequences. I mean, Amoresco is hardly a big dog, and we should be enforcing our contract with them if there's something going on with that. Excel is way bigger than us for us to go after. So how, my concern is how we would enforce that and who would be responsible for managing that, for holding the contract accountable. Is that our city attorney or your office?
It's probably my office, not dissimilar to our Partners in Energy program where we have partnered with them to actually reduce our greenhouse gas. We're going to be paying a lot more attention to this. I think you're, what we haven't had the opportunity to talk about yet is further investment at our larger facilities in more energy-efficient equipment. You're going to start to see more of those types of requests, not dissimilar to what you heard tonight about pumps that were failing and not as efficient. We're going to be looking at ways in which to invest in more efficient pump systems, more efficient lighting systems. That's just going to be the wave of the future because that's, for us, an easier way to reduce our cost, because we're not making more money here from a revenue standpoint, so we have to look at the third leg of making money in business, and that's cutting your cost. So we're going to be doing more of that, but that is going to take somewhat of an investment on behalf of this particular council in the future as well, not dissimilar to what's already been discussed with the biogas project, which, you know, there's some agreement that that, you know, will help, and we hope that when that comes forward, that too will be supported, but we're going to see more energy efficiency measures brought forward.
And I like that we're having more energy efficiency measures being brought forward. I guess what I'm asking is that I want some accountability, some way to measure whether they're successful or not and whether they're performing.
Right.
We're getting the bang for the buck.
Yeah.
And right now, I don't see that we've got a process in place to go ahead and measure that, and I'm sure you'll be bringing something forward soon so that we can have some timeline so that we're checking up on this before, that we're checking up on it.
Right.
Could you present something when we go ahead and put into this of how you're going to go ahead and figure out whether it's performing to the standard that we're expecting it to?
I think we can accommodate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Olson?
What will the process be if we go ahead and approve this tonight? What will the process be then for a contract? Will that come then back to us, so then, and that's where we'll see all of these things written into it?
Yeah, what happens is I have to go into their system, their portal, and go account by account, and so we have several Class C accounts, I think 50-something accounts. I have to enter each account in with the annual kilowatt-hour usage.
You have that many accounts?
No, we have 75 accounts. Yeah, we have lots of accounts. You have to think, each meter at facilities is considered an account.
Ah, okay.
It's a premise, and so we have several premises, not only just this facility but other facilities. We have traffic signals. We've got other things that actually have an energy draw that they charge us for. We have streetlights as well. So from that standpoint, I'll have to enter in all that data, and when I do, and I basically hit, you know, agree, they will send us an agreement in the mail that I will need to have the mayor eventually sign, should the council decide to approve this particular program.
So with all of those accounts, we have the capability of looking at what is consuming the most?
Correct.
And you know where it all is because of those subdivisions divided in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's helpful. It'd be, I don't want to ask you to do this now, but if there's some, if there's some point along the way for us to get sort of a summary of those, just so we know what's consuming it all, I don't want to...
I can send you our Class C accounts as soon as I get a chance to sit down. I have that spreadsheet now, and I have to look at that on a monthly basis anyway, because as you might imagine, according to our procurement rules, bills that have a certain dollar threshold, nobody but me has the authority to approve that expenditure, so I look at more bills than I would like to, but energy is one of the larger ones that is a recurring, a recurrence for us.
Yeah, thank you. I enjoy seeing that. I hope we don't have accounts per light on the streets, but...
They aggregate them into a panel.
Thank you.
What is the timeframe for this to launch? I mean, because you said it was already supposed to have launched.
Yes, a good point. This has been in the works for some time. I've been in touch with our government affairs representative, Tom Henley, and said, Tom, what's the holdup? Two things, I think, the infrastructure, the backroom infrastructure, it's almost like a lottery, and so they've had to design a computer portal system. I don't know why they're doing it this way, but they feel like this is the best way to roll this particular project out. They've been designing the backroom portal to have people sign on, and I think that's been the major hang-up, is making sure that it's not going to be overloaded, like everybody joining Netscape, you know, and they, one day, and it just crashes the server. So I think that's what their concern has been, that they have a process to allow people to enter, you know, get online and enter into the portal.
Do they have any idea how long that's going to be?
They said it will be this month, so either next Monday or the following Monday, the 23rd or the 30th, to launch this program. And like I said, it could be an email saying, here it is. I thought that when I got back from vacation that this was when the project was going to launch, and we weren't quite ready yet because I hadn't had the analysis of all of our Class C accounts as well as our corporate accounts to look at to see, geez, is this going to be worthwhile or not? And then looking at it, it seems to be that this would be very worthwhile from not only a cost perspective, but also the perspective of saying we're going to retire energy credits or greenhouse gas emissions are going away.
And what is the cost for us if we would decide or we would need to back out?
Excellent question. There is small print in that agreement, so every account or every premise, if you were to quit, there's a $100 fee for that, $100 fee for that to leave those accounts. We also have the opportunity to, if for some reason we decide to move the wastewater treatment plant to some other location, we can actually reassign that location code and still maintain the program. So there is that also. So I was thinking during this time, geez, council hasn't made decisions on critical infrastructure facilities such as the one we're in today. If we decide to go someplace else, what do we do? Well, we then move our energy consumption over to a new location, and that location then becomes part of the Renewable Connect program. We have that ability as well.
Okay. And one thing that does concern me in this annual energy outlook for 2017 that was included in the packet?
Yes.
The thing that concerns me a lot is it's all based on speculation...
Yes.
And much uncertainty. And I think there is a cost to us. I'm...actually, do we have to pay something upfront, like what we're normally paying would go towards that? How much money do we have to put out?
No, as you saw in my memorandum to you, for the remainder of 2018 and then potentially in 2019, there's a net zero cost to us. There's no capital outlay cost to us at all. The capital outlay is being made by Touchstone Energy or Excel's parent company at Deer Trail. So they're buying the facility. Where the cost could come to us, Mayor, would be if, again, fossil fuels dip in price. So all of a sudden, natural gas dips down or coal dips, depending upon the source of the power that they are generating for us, then that's where we potentially could have to start paying a cost because the difference between the commercial value as well as the value of the fossil fuel. So right now, fossil fuel is more expensive, so that's why our cost, net cost would be zero. So excellent question, and you're exactly right. When you're talking about energy, just like you're talking about gold and silver, you're speculating on the cost of where it's going to be. If mining were to stop tomorrow, we'd be great because nobody's mining any coal anymore. So, you know, it would be more demand for renewables. But we don't know that. So we're utilizing the best information possible, which is the EIA. That's the gold standard for looking at energy predictions and energy costs going into the future.
So is there only a certain time of the year that we can get out of this?
No, you could...again, for each premise, if you sign up and the council decides, hey, you know what, we want to pull out this program, you can pull out at any time with a penalty. So that's important to understand. But yeah, that's the way the processor of the account is...or the contract is written.
Okay. Because I saw something in there about 90 days. You have 90 days within the renewal date, or...and if you don't contact them that you want to terminate, they automatically renew?
Basically, it runs...you're right. Depending on your term, it's an annual...you get toward the end of the year if you say, I want to out. But you can exit any point in time that you want. That's just saying if you...a lot of these customers are only going to be probably looking at one premise, and it's written for that way. We have to use what's called the multiple subscription service because we have multiple accounts.
Okay. So it's possible at some point that we would see, if the price dips low enough, that it would be advantageous for us...
To exit.
To exit.
Correct.
Okay, and we can do that at any time. Okay, are there any more questions? Councilmember Martinez.
Along those same lines, if we were to decide to get out of this, we would do it account at a time, right? It's not just one whole thing. It would be per each class. We would decide...
And that...yes, you could do it that way, but that would obviously be whatever council at the time's decision to do.
But either way, it would be $100 per account.
Yes, that you exit.
Right.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
Move...didn't we already do that? No. I move to approve 11C2.
A second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes may cast. Let the record show, five ayes.
Thank you. Moving on to general discussion. Mayor's Choice, I would just like to thank the community for coming out to 4G's one-year celebration. I would like to thank the chamber. It was really a great time, and the Gonzalases were incredibly happy, and so that was a great time. I also...is it possible to...Mr. Keck, and I don't know if you know the answer to this already, the roof on the city center, is it possible that Amoresco would be responsible for that, or do we need to check on that?
Mayor, I would need to check on that answer.
Okay.
That happened before my time, and I would need to confer with legal counsel and take a look at the specific language in the agreement to see what kind of culpability might be there.
Okay, so if we could check on some of the things that were brought forward tonight in that presentation. And also, could we get information on Mr. Margota's concerns that the city is...I mean, it appears as though the city may be coming after him?
Yeah.
About the license issue and all of that?
I believe there was a council request already on this. I actually reviewed that, and I'm not sure if you received it in last week's packet.
Okay, yes, I think we did. We did receive that.
I'm happy to dig into this more. I've looked into the matter, and where I can appreciate where some of his claims are coming from, it...there's...it's kind of a conspiratorial belief or theory, and I'm not saying anything negative towards him. I actually talked to Mr. Margotta about his situation and actually went to visit with Community Development as well. And there's quite a record of conversation between Mr. Margotta and our Community Development staff where he was afforded a bunch of information, indeed, and to make a decision and didn't follow up with a decision, either to go to seek a variance, which he really needs, really what he's looking for. But again, I'm happy to give you what we have. Matter of fact, I'll go back in and ask our Community Development Department to provide the council with any emails from 2017, I believe is when this particular issue started. We'll pull all those and provide them to you. But the fact of the matter is that our Licensing Department believes that the type of consignment or sale of motorcycles is tantamount to sale of motorcycles, and he's not permitted for that at his location. So that's where we're coming from, I think.
Okay, thank you. And you don't have to...the information that we got last week, we don't need that again. Thank you. Councilmember's Choice. Councilmember Barantine.
I do appreciate the information that you gave on JJ's...the council request that I put out. If you could just please take a look at the information that he's provided and give us a little bit more information regarding that, I would appreciate it. I do want to thank the chamber. Mostly, I want to thank the mayor for going ahead and making sure that the event at 4G's happened. I greatly appreciate the organization and reaching out to everybody to make that happen for her. That was just so...so sweet to see them celebrate their first anniversary at 4G's. They were so grateful. It was so well-attended. A lot of you in the audience were there, so...and we all had a great time. And to see her tear up at the attention and support from the community in District 3 was heartwarming. So thank you very much, Mayor Russell, for making that...participating with me and making that happen and getting the chamber involved. I greatly appreciate it. There were 14 people, including a 71-year-old woman, whose first time at yoga at the...an event that I had never done before, but I guess it's becoming quite popular, is April Yoga. And what they did is that before devils had opened up, they all put their little yoga mats out there, and we did yoga for an hour, and I made it through the entire thing. There were about, I think, 14 people there. The gal who was 71, who...sweet woman, who it was her very first time, actually also for the first time in her life, won a drawing as well. So it was a lot of firsts that day, so it was very nice. I appreciate Doug bringing up the memorial service again. This particular one is going to be near and dear to my heart. I have bought a paver for my father, who this year has passed 20 years, served in Korea. And so I'm particularly looking forward to this one. It has, for the last two years, I believe, right? This is the third...this will be the fourth. Been an amazing...been an amazing event, and I imagine this year will not be any different. So thank you, and I'm grateful that the Historic Society was also doing the pavers as well. My stepfather will be remembered next year. I just can't do them the same year. They didn't always get along, so I want to make sure that they have separate years. And thank you to everybody who came out tonight. I greatly appreciate the presentation, both from Jerry Walker and from Coen on the Amoresco. It is a reminder for council and staff that when we go into these agreements, that they sound really great at the time, but sometimes they can be forgotten, and it's really important that we have some method of following up on them, especially if there's been any damage done or if we're not...if we're overpaying. I don't want to give people the impression that we're doing sustainability, but the reality of it. And thank you all for coming out.
Councilmember Wink.
Thank you. Many constituents have questions about code enforcement, so I'd like to say their next meeting is this Thursday, April 18th, at 5:30 PM in the council conference room. And my monthly community meeting, Wink Talk, will be this Saturday morning, April 21st, at 10:30 AM in the Perrin Room of the public library downstairs, and the topic will be zoning 101. That's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I just have a couple of things. I attended the student art...or the student art show in the library last week. It was very well-attended, and just want to thank all the library staff, all the students for their wonderful artwork, and all the families who participated in that, and all the members of the school board who are so supportive of our kids and the arts. Had a great meeting with KEB this past week as well. I love...they're so excited about everything they're doing, so I'm excited about working with them. There's also a reminder that there is a River Rock Cleanup Event this Saturday with the wastewater treatment plant, the Police Department, and Keeping Wood Beautiful at 11:00 AM. I think...I'm signed up. I think Councilmember Wink is also signed up. Lots of community members have signed up, so it would be great to have you all there as well. And I'm looking forward to working with Councilmember Wink and the business owners to come up with some possible solutions on that 3,400 block, 43.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. The Parks and Rec Committee last week met on Thursday, and Councilmember Questa asked if I would stay for the whole time. He had a family conflict with it, so I stayed. And I just wanted you all to know that the Leadership Academy, the Inglewood Leadership Academy, students presented a tobacco-free park proposal to the Parks and Rec. And it was delightful to see their research that they had done, the work that they're thinking about. They picked up a lot of cigarette puts and brought them in. I said, please don't leave them here. So it's going to come forward via the Parks and Rec. I told them that if they didn't get satisfactory hearing there, they can always come to a city council meeting, which is what they were going to do to begin with. But when they asked me about it several months ago, I said, really, the best place is to start with the commission and see what they think, and then bring it forward that way, and then you have another chance with us. So that is something in the works. The chamber sent out, again, today, I think, the list of things going on for the next week. So you'll see, and I think Councilmember Wink, last week, you kind of read through that. It's a new email thing that they're doing, which is really quite nice. So I don't have to keep telling you they're there. I think it's a great way for them to get the word out, and feel free to go to any of those things. Last week, I went to the breakfast that they had over in the neurological institute, and it was Mind Boglin Researcher that presented to us. It was very interesting. And the last thing is, I guess I have a question for the study sessions. When is the topic for home access? I'm having trouble accessing my...one of my sites for getting both council requests and others, but do we have a date on it, just for the public to know when it is?
We do. It's May 14th.
It is May 14th, okay. Thank you very much. That's it.
Great. Thank you. City Manager's Report.
Mayor, council, I have a couple of items, but I'm not going to be the one talking about them. I want to have Chief Watson talk to you about a change in CDOT grant program that's kind of put the city into a bind. So, Chief Watson.
Apparently, the...apparently, the Police Department accepts grants from Colorado Department of Transportation, CDOT, and generally, there's smaller grants, but the sum of those are, you know, significant, $20,000 to $30,000 a year, mainly for high-visibility enforcement grants, seatbelt-type grants. And we have an agreement with them through an IGA from the city through 2019. However, we were just informed that they changed the application process recently, and the deadline is...was today. So in order for us to receive grant money from CDOT, we had to have an application in by 5 o'clock today. We just found out about this last week, Wednesday of last week. So again, in order for us to receive grant money from CDOT, we had to submit this application. If the application is successful, then we'll come back to you with the information on the grant for final approval. So we just wanted to let you know. Normally, we come to you in advance of an application. That's our normal protocol, but we didn't want to risk losing this money. If that wasn't okay, if you would like to withdraw that, we could certainly withdraw the application, but I would advise to let this go forward and see if we're successful.
Thank you. Do you want us to discuss that right now?
Yes, please.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Barantine.
When do they normally put the application process out?
I'm new into this, so I can't speak about normally. All I know is about this one, and I'm disappointed that we didn't have more information, and I'll check into the reasons why.
But CDOT didn't just do it for us, and maybe this is more for Manager Keck. CDOT didn't change the process just for us, and that's usually something that CML is kind of on top of, for warning us if there's a change in a major project like that.
Yeah, we didn't have any idea that this particular program was changing until, as you heard from the chief, which was last Wednesday. CML did not send out any information upon this either to let us know that was...
Well, I know, but we have...would like to make sure we've got something in place so that we've got a heads-up, so we're not blindsided like this in the future. And we do have organizations that we work with that I think should give us a heads-up or warn us that we're working with, so maybe we can reach out to them and see if we can get a little better process on that. I hate to see you rushing around like that for something like that, but obviously, we're not the only one who was under the gun. I can't imagine we were the only one who were surprised by it, so thanks for the information.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I agree, and I want to thank you for going ahead and doing the work for it to move it forward anyway. And we can vote to pull it off if we don't want to, but I appreciate your being really transparent about it and letting us know, and I...let's hope we get it.
Absolutely, and I concur with that. Thank you. Okay, did you have something else?
Yes, the second item relates to the facilitation of the council strategic planning session on May 5th, and Mr. Wolf has a brief report on that that he'd like to present to council.
Yes, I just wanted to give council information related to potential facilitator for May 5th. I've been able to...your two different scopes of work, both are comparable in terms of price. The difference is in the number of hours you get. The good news is that on short notice, we found two that are available on May 5th, which is the first criteria. I've had short conversations with both. The range of the...of the proposals are in the $3,500 to $5,000 range, so we would need your go-ahead tonight to engage with one or the other. The main difference between the two proposals, other than price, is one of the two facilitators would like to spend a little time with you in advance of the May 5th session. So I think just a little bit different approach. The other would, I think, spend more of the pre-work, going through your previous council meetings and in meeting with staff to get caught up. So really, it's total amount of hours, I think, is the main difference between the two. They both have very impressive backgrounds in facilitation. So I'd be personally comfortable giving the green light to either one, so I can provide you with both scopes if you want to be involved to that level of detail and you can make a decision. I will say that there is some urgency in engaging with one of the two, so we don't lose their availability on that date. But cost, go ahead, and whether or not you'd like to be involved in deciphering between the two proposals or the two asks this evening.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Manager Wolf, the facilitator or potential facilitator that would prefer to meet with us before the May 5th date, would that individual want to meet with us together as a whole or individually?
Individually. Individually.
Wonderful. So, I am okay with the cost, I would prefer that facilitator, and I say yes all across the board. Move forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
That's a great question. That was my first one. The second one was to say, will he set up, or she, I don't know, will they set up with us each individually at our own kind of time, or is there a certain timeframe that he has to work with as well? Do you know? Or she, I don't know.
The, the gentleman that did want to do the, the pre-meetings, he, I believe, was only available in the week leading up to May fifth, so it would be that week that, that he'd be requesting. I was trying to see if he had flexibility, I think he had put in his scope an hour of pre-work, said maybe if that could be closer to, to a half-hour of pre-work, it, it could save some on the, on the cost of the entire scope, and he was willing to be flexible on that, so I think the week before for that particular facilitator.
Gosh, I, I think that's a great idea, if we can each do it. I like that idea that they get to know some of what we've been thinking, similarly to what you did with us, to get his, his own perspective on, so I'd be, I'd be positive about that.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine.
I, I agree with Councilmember Olson, I think that meeting similar to how the assistant city manager met with us would be helpful, and we've done that before with other, with other projects. Has this facilitator worked specifically with government entities before, and have, do they have any experience with Inglewood previously?
Previous cities, yes, I'm just looking at a resume right now. I, I don't believe there was any previous experience with the city of, of Inglewood, but I can certainly confirm that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I, I can confirm that. I, I don't see anything with the city of Inglewood.
That's unfortunate. I mean, it wouldn't have been a deal-breaker for me, I just wondered if they'd had an opportunity. We've had a lot of, of facilitation in so many different areas in the city, it might have been, might have been helpful, it wouldn't have been a deal-breaker. Do they have municipal of this kind of size issue going on, so?
The, the ones listed on, on the individual's resume are city of Longmont, city of Boulder, Denver, and Breckenridge.
Okay, thank you very much for the information.
Councilmember Martinez, would you like to weigh in?
Sure, I would like to move forward with the individual who would like to spend a little bit of time with us beforehand, and that cost range is perfect.
And I'm good with that as well.
Okay, perfect, we will move forward, and I will certainly let council know once we finalize that, and let you know about next steps for scheduling that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Manager Keck?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorneys' report?
No report this evening.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.